Good afternoon and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of Monday, September 16. Please be advised, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chambers by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a short moment of silent meditation, and please remain standing if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, the name of any organization represented by such person, and their address, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Each speaker should state whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads the item and the applicant has presented. After public comments, the applicant may make one short rebuttal. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that day, nor planned on a future agenda. We ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of council to proceed unimpeded. Tonight is a public meeting, an open public meeting where people can speak. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our City Council Meeting of Monday, September 16th, is our consent agenda, Sections 1, Sections 2, and 3.
All right. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on any item on consent? Items 1, 2, or 3. Anyone here present to speak on a consent item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we may proceed.
I'll call Item 1A, reappointing Blake Anderson and Michelle Peterson to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for terms to expire September 1st, 2027, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving Red Zone Sports Bar and Grill LLC located at 3111 Northwest 12th Street as a Kino Satellite, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving a professional services agreement supplement number 1 for preliminary engineering services between the City of Lincoln and JEO Consulting Group, Inc., for the Cotner Boulevard from O Street to Star Street Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is approving a professional services agreement supplement number 1 for environmental services between the City of Lincoln and HDR Engineering, Inc., for Cotner Boulevard from O Street to Star Street Rehabilitation Project, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Carlson.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1E is approving an LPA program agreement between the City of Lincoln and State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of Federal State Transportation Council for Phase 2 of the standardizing Lincoln's Integrated E-construction Project, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Schob.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1F is approving a professional services agreement supplement number 1 for construction engineering services between the City of Lincoln and Olson, Inc., for the Fletcher Landmark Trail, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1G is approving an LPA program agreement between the City of Lincoln and the State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of Carbon Reduction Program, funds for the widening of the Rock Island Trail from A Street to Bosalis Trail, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1H is approving an LPA program agreement between the City of Lincoln and Nebraska Department of Transportation for the use of Carbon Reduction Program, funds for the Rock Island Trail from A Street to Bosalis Trail, introduced by Beckyus.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
Item 2A was introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. Moving on to public hearing liquor resolutions.
I'll call Item 4A, manager application of Ross L. Gorham for the On the Rise Lincoln LLC doing business as Blaze Pizza located at 1317 Q Street, Suite 170.
Come on down.
Hi there.
Hi. Would you please state your name and address?
Yes, Ross Gorham, 1317 Q Street, Suite 170.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
So you're putting in an application to become the liquor manager at Blaze?
Correct.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us about Blaze Pizza?
It's really good.
Okay.
If you haven't been there, come see us.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Do any of the councilors have questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gorham.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up and testify on Item 4A?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Okay. Seeing none. Let's move on.
I'll call Item 4B, manager application of Rachel McGill for Heidgill, Inc., doing business as Dish Restaurant located at 1100 O Street.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Rachel McGill, 1100 East O Street. I'm on behalf of Dish Restaurant today, not the Sitch.
Okay.
So to become the manager of Dish and then for my SDL as well.
Okay. All right. Is there anything you'd like us to know about the Dish or your SDL application?
Uh, no. My ex-wife was just the manager on the liquor license before at Dish, so I'm just taking over that role. And then the SDL is just for Patty's party next week.
Okay. I do want to note that your application, in the entire time that you've had a liquor license, you've had absolutely no violations.
Nope.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Oh, Madam Clerk, it's my turn actually.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, well, Councilman Schob.
I was daydreaming. I was thinking about something. I was thinking about the Dish. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve both Items 4A and 4B.
Second.
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? All right. Then let's proceed. Madam Clerk.
Beckyus.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Congratulations. All righty. Let's move on to public hearing resolutions. Madam Clerk.
I'll call Item 5A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for August 16 through August 31 of 2024.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item? Anyone here to speak on the item, claims against the city? Not seen. I know. Yeah. I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on claims against the city? If you have a claim with the city, please come forward. All right. Please state your name and address.
Justin Dubas, 6910 Orchard, Lincoln, 68505.
All right. Would you tell us a little bit about this claim?
Sure. So, the incident was August 5. I had went over to pick up my kids for lunch, and as I was dropping them back off, Old Dominion Freight Line Truck came down the neighborhood and took down a power line. And it came across both my son's SUV and my truck and trailer, and then snapped and then coiled up around the semi truck. So they, we called LPD. They came, the fire department came. There's a police report I don't have, but I don't know if you guys have access to that. So first I went to Old Dominion, and I don't know if you guys want all the pictures and photos that I have.
Oh, yes. You place them on the screen to your right, facing up.
Sure.
Thank you.
So these are just all the damages, all these photos that I have right here. The other ones were the emails from Old Dominion denying the claim because they said that their truck does not exceed the 13 feet 6 inches. That is whatever regulation. And so that they turned it over, it should be handled by whoever owns the cable line is what they were saying. That's that email. So then I went to the city, no, sorry, LES, because we assumed that the power lines would be owned by them. So after talking to LES, they referred us to the City of Lincoln. They said because incidents involved in the streetlight, the City of Lincoln will take lead in administering this claim. And then he gave me the, you know, information and stuff we need to file with the city. So my son's SUV is owned by my ex-wife, and she wasn't able to be here because of her job. But he also has, I think, a separate claim. I'm not sure if it's all tied together for his SUV.
I believe they were separate claims.
Okay. So I have the information for him and that, but it's all the same incident. So there's that one. That's from the LES, just referring us over to you guys. The rest of these are all just damages to my truck and trailer and his SUV, and then just other stuff. Or the, the street signs, you can actually see, like, the power lines wrapped around the 69th and Orchard Street signs, and then the semi, which apparently they're over the, or under 13.6, and the power lines are supposed to be 15.6, so there's supposed to be like a two-foot leeway. So then I got a letter from the City of Lincoln, and basically, they're saying that in order for this type of claim to be authorized for payment for public funds, it must be shown that the city had knowledge of a claim defective, a claim defect with the streetlight wire prior to the incident. My honest opinion is that this probably happened when we got the storms with like 80 mile per hour winds and like tore apart the city in this neighborhood. There's branches everywhere. So within two days, I wasn't there to see it. They never noticed it, but as, I don't think they would have had it repaired within a couple of days, because I went back over a week later, got another picture, and they still hadn't even repaired the power line. So, and about three weeks later, I believe they finally did. So whether it was reported or not, I think that's irrelevant for us to see it and notice it, like, we're going to go out there and tape measure something. I don't know. So for them to deny the claim seems kind of absurd to me, and we just, I didn't even turn in any repair damages to my trailer. And then we got several estimates. I feel like these were fair. So mine was 2,100, I think it was like 1,500. So that's all we're asking for, just to have our vehicles repaired.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from other councilors on this item?
I do.
Okay. Councilman Duden.
Thank you, Chairman Washington. Is it Ben?
Justin.
You're Justin. I was looking at going by the note that you put up there. And your last name again was what?
Dubas.
Dubas. You have a case number, LPD case number for this?
I do not. There is a...
There is a police report.
Police report about it, yes.
And it's under your name?
I believe so. There was like an exchange of information report that I got, but I never got an actual police report with like whatever she documented.
Okay.
And I still don't think she was very thorough about it. It was an older guy that came out and just kind of went over it quick. And then when the fire department came there, they were like just cutting up the line and getting it off the street and like didn't, she didn't ask them any questions or anything either.
And what did it, do you have pictures of the damages?
I do, yeah.
Can I see them?
Sure. You want them up here?
Yeah.
So this is my son's SUV. It started on the back of his and like pulled it, the tension across it, both of our vehicles before it finally snapped, because the truck kept going. He didn't know it until, you know, obviously like it was smacking his semi. So this is his SUV. So you can see like it got the antenna on the side, and it just like, they put a bunch of moldings and stuff on there. I don't, you know, like, that's the only ones that he had given me, my son did. This is the, you can see the wires like coiled up around the telephone pole, and then this is like where the semi had stopped.
This is 69th and Orchard? Let me slow you up a little bit.
Did you want that 69th and Orchard one again?
No, I just wanted to make sure I had the right street.
Yep, yep. Yep, my kid's house is like literally a block in, or a house in on that north side of the block. And then, so here's like just a couple with the semi. You can see like it all coiled up, and then they like had to like cut it off his axles and stuff, because it actually was wrapped around his whole front end of his truck.
So this wire was already down on the ground when you hit it?
No, no. He caught it with the top of his trailer right up here, so like right over his cab. It was a low line wire, apparently, and he got it, and it ripped it from, this goes about half a block up towards 70th Street. There's another light pole or a light period. And so like if you look at the light here, this is all, the next pole is down, so there's just a wire from here to the one about a half a block down. And then here's the...
And that's not your truck there?
This, this is the damage to my truck here. This is a, it also started at the front, like by the bug deflector, went across. It sounded like a tree branch like fell on my truck. It's what we originally thought, so we like turned around and looked at the semi, but it got my, spidered my windshield. You can see like the, the black marks going up across the windshield from the wire. This is the side of my truck. This is the back of the cab. You can still see like the scuffs. There was like, it were grounded out on both of our vehicles, like it actually arced into the paint, so that was where some of the more intense damage was, I guess you'd say. This is just like, you see the black marks across the top of the cab. There's like an arc mark there. This is the back of my truck where it caught the bottom, and then it stretched out across my trailer. And like I said, I just replaced the light, and there was like some minor damage to that of the old trailer, so I didn't care about it.
Mr. Dubas, are you also here to, to address your son's?
Yes, yeah. It's the same, same incident. He was in the truck with me.
Okay.
But he's a minor.
So you're here for both yours and?
Ashley.
Ashley?
Ashley Beadham, yep. That's his mom.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from councilors?
I'd like to make a motion, though, to maybe put this, those two on hold. Take a look at the accident, the police department's report.
Okay. We can do that during voting session.
Okay.
On the motion, if you wouldn't mind holding your motion for, for just a moment. Okay. Would you like to speak with anyone in law or?
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Good afternoon.
Lily Ely, Assistant City Attorney, 555 South 10th Street.
Questions?
Is there a question?
So LES owns the wire.
Yeah, so this is, and I may have to have the city attorney come up here if I say this wrong, but this is part of that MOU that the city has with LES. So LES is responsible for maintaining the street light lines. The city is responsible for handling the claims associated with any damage from those streetlight lines.
Can you give me any reason why it was denied?
Sure. It's exactly as Mr. Dubas said in, in the letter that I sent him. Neither the city nor LES had any notice that the line was at an improper height for passing, or that the line was sagging due to any storm. And I will note that this is not an arterial street. It's not a street that would be typically considered a truck route. And so it is my understanding that both Mr. Dubas and Ms. Beadham were given information from Old Dominion's Insurance Company that the lines were too low for their trucks to pass through. I can't say if that's the case. All I can say is that the lines, there's no notice on the city's part or on LES's part that the lines were at an improper height, both generally or at that time. And so that's why, I mean, there's no negligence on the part of the city in my understanding of, of where we're at.
Do you know how high the wire was supposed to be or?
I do not. I know that that is part of the electrical code, and that would be a question, I'm sure LES could give an exact answer to, but I spoke with the risk manager at LES, and he spoke with the crews. They had no reason to believe the lines were not at an appropriate height, both generally or at that time, due to a drooping line.
And you don't know what height they're supposed to be at?
No, that'd be a question for LES.
Well, no, there's a, there's a state statute that addresses that.
It's the National Electric Code. Yep. And so I spoke with LES. They had no notice that it was not at a proper height at that time, and there's no indication that the lines were generally not up to code. I can't give you the exact height. I don't know it.
Okay. That's what I was looking, that's what I'm after.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have estimates on the damage from a body shop or something?
I do, yeah. And I submitted those to the city office with the claim. I have pictures of his, his that he sent me today, if you want to see that one.
Okay. Nope, I think that's all I have.
All right. All righty. All right. Thank you very much, and thank you. When we get to the voting session, so we have two more items in this section of resolutions. We're going to hear each of those, and then we're going to come back around and vote on each of those. During the voting session, a counselor could remove an item from the list, which means it's not necessarily paid, but it is removed for further discussion or research. That's what Councilman Duden has indicated he would be doing during the voting session, and then it would go be sent back to law for further...
So do I need to hang around still to?
If you'd like us to watch the vote, to know how it ends up?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the next item?
I'll call Item 5B. Is, is there anyone else here?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I just assumed, I'm, forget that. I'm gonna, I made an assumption.
Just don't say it.
Yeah. Was there anyone else here who'd like, as a claimant, who'd like to approach? If you'd like just um to watch the vote, to know how it ends up.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the next item?
I'll call item five B. Is, is there anyone else here?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I just assumed, I'm, forget that, I'm gonna, I made an assumption. Yeah, was there anyone else here who'd like, as a claimant, who'd like to approach? Okay. Alright, Madam Clerk, you may read the next item.
Item five B is a resolution declaring September 21st as Oto-Missouri Day.
Alright, um I would like to uh address on this item, this is something that I brought forward. Um, and so if you wouldn't mind, Vice Chair, holding the gavel for a moment.
Your Honor.
Thank you very much, um for the last number of years, the city has issued a proclamation um from the mayor um designating September 21st as Oto-Missouri Day, uh in recognition of their historic and longstanding relationship with um the area that is Lincoln, Nebraska. Um, after a number of years of asking for the proclamation, um I was asked if this could be a more permanent uh recognition of the Oto-Missouri tribe's uh influence, stewardship, and historical association with this area, and I said, it seems to make sense, it seems like a good idea. And as, in as much as Lincoln has uh set itself up to be a place that is welcoming of immigrants and refugees, uh we are also welcoming of people who were here first, and I just thought this was a good moment to acknowledge this um for this upcoming Oto-Missouri Day on September 21st. And with that, I would invite anyone, uh any discussion from council members first, and then anyone here today who'd like to speak on this.
Do we have any council members would like to speak? Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item, five B? There's two microphones on either side, feel free to go ahead and introduce yourself with your address.
Good afternoon, my name is Kevin Aberask, 5930 Garfield Street, uh I'm a longtime resident of Lincoln, and uh here to talk about this, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Margaret Jacobs, I'm a resident of Lincoln as well for 21 years, and I'm at 4119 Sheridan Boulevard.
Thank you, um, just a little bit quickly about kind of how this all started, about four years ago, Margaret and I started a podcast called Reconciliation Rising that looked at the um efforts to heal historical wounds of the past between native people and non-native people. Uh, one of the first people that we interviewed were a native woman and a non-native woman from Boulder, Colorado, who were seeking to welcome home the displaced Cheyenne and Arapaho people of that area. When we got back to Lincoln, uh Margaret and I determined ourselves to try to do the same thing here in Lincoln. Uh, so that took a while, first we had to do some research and find out who were the people who used to call this area home. Um, we discovered a number of things after interviewing several historians, um including uh David Wishart, who's author of a book called An Unspeakable Sadness About the Displaced People of Nebraska. Uh, Mr. Wishart um informed us that the people who used to call Lincoln home were the Omaha, Kansas, Pawnee, and Oto-Missouri people. Um, as you probably know, none of those uh tribes continue to reside here in Lincoln, at least they don't have their headquarters here, certainly members of their tribe uh still call Lincoln home. Um, but this is something that we thought would be really good for our community to uh try to reestablish some kind of connection to the Oto-Missouri people, um, we would like to welcome them home, we would like to uh allow them to uh reconnect with their past, reconnect with um this place that their ancestors once called home. I'm sure all of you uh feel as I do that Lincoln is an incredible place to live, to raise children. You know, we've built our homes here, we've built our churches here, we've built our places of business here. And uh, and it's, I feel, you know, right to, to welcome home the people who, whose sacrifices, I would say, um allowed us to be here, allowed us to live here, so, that's all I'll say about that, but thank you so much.
Thank you, I'll pick up where Kevin left off, um, I, I would second everything he just said. What happened when uh we started reaching out to the Oto-Missouri uh young man we'd met named Corey DeRoin, uh he brought with him a delegation of four people from the uh Oto-Missouri tribe in May of 2022, and we had a very whirlwind um time together for about three days, where they met with uh the faith community here in Lincoln, the local Indian community, park rangers, um University of Nebraska administrators, and everything culminated in a meeting with our mayor. And at that meeting, uh the Oto-Missouri asked her if she would establish an Oto-Missouri Day. And we were all thrilled that she said yes. And so for the last two years, we've been celebrating Oto-Missouri Day on September 21st, which was one of the days the Oto-Missouri signed a treaty seeding their land, uh and that land is that's where we're sitting, standing, right now. Um, so we're really grateful to the city council, and especially to Councilwoman Sandra Washington, uh to put forward this resolution and to consider this resolution to make this a permanent day of acknowledgement and healing. I want to speak just really briefly about what it means for me, I'm as a non-native person um who's lived in Lincoln for almost 20 years, or almost 21 years. Um, and I also want to share with you a statement from uh Christina Goodson, who's a, a member of the tribe who hoped to be here today and was waylaid by a flat tire in Wichita, so I, I have a brief statement to read from her as well. But for me, I'm really proud that my community is facing up to our history and taking responsibility for the way that our, our city is built uh on the land of the Oto-Missouri Nation. I'm proud that my city is not just issuing a land acknowledgement, but is creating and supporting opportunities for our city residents to actually connect with some of the descendants of the indigenous people on whose land we occupy, and to not only connect, but to build new relationships and to heal from the past. Um, and I also want to mention that I really feel at, after uh working with Oto-Missouri for more than two years, that they're bringing the city of Lincoln and all of its residents a great gift. They have a lot to teach us about how to persist through hard times, how to face up and to honor our histories, how to rebuild and restore one's culture and society, how to be good stewards to our precious lands and waters, and how to be good relatives. And now I, if you will indulge me one final minute, I just want to uh share Christina's statement. I want to offer my sincere apologies for not being physically present today. I am honored and grateful to the council for considering this resolution. We as Oto-Missouri people have worked for many years to have our voices and history reflected in mainstream narratives. This resolution to provide for an annual proclamation is a step towards the further growth of the relationship between the Oto-Missouri tribe and the city of Lincoln, and a future which honors both of our stories. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jacobs.
Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on item five B? Please come forward. And state your name for the record and address, please.
Thank you, um, thank you, Roy Helm, I identify with the pronouns of he and him, and I reside at 2750 South 13th Street, which is Oto-Missouri land. I speak in favor of this uh resolution and, and the proclamation, and uh I do have some comments, uh, I, I appreciate the, the gratitude that I've just heard of, that we've just heard of, but I still feel that some of this rings hollow. A, a, and I say that because i- in this uh resolution, uh on the first page, lines two, three, four, i- it states, and I quote, reaffirming the city of Lincoln's commitment to promote the well-being and growth of Lincoln's indigenous communities. And then on page two, with lines eight and nine, and I quote, whereas the city of Lincoln recognizes the importance of acts of reconciliation and healing to address these historic injustices are the basis for a strengthened partnership. And that sounds well and good, but it, to me, it rings a little hollow, uh a, and it rings hollow because we had an opportunity in, in the past to prevent a, a housing development that encroached on some very important lands to the Oto-Missouri people. A, and we had an opportunity there to offer a little more reconciliation, of, of making a sacrifice from this group of, of settlers, of colonialists. So I, I'm not, you know, I've come to terms with that, I've forgiven, but I just was not comfortable not bringing that forward and saying something about that, it, it, we missed an opportunity, and uh i- i- it's very unfortunate, and I, while I also appreciate th- this uh resolution, I don't think it goes far enough into the injustices that were, that were served. All, all we need do i- is look today at the situation in Gaza and the West Bank, and the genocide that's occurring, a, and reflect upon that, and transpose that to 150 years ago, and the genocide that occurred here, and contin- and, and it, it's heart wrenching, a, and I don't think we've gone far enough to work towards reconciliation. I know that some of this i- is political, it, it's difficult, not everybody wants to uh address the past, but I belong to a faith group that uh had Indian boarding schools 150 years ago. A, and we know what the history of those were, they were about cultural genocide. Perhaps when uh they were started, it was by people with good intentions, but they, they were not, I mean, the, the results were not, they were, they were cruel, uh a, a, and a, a scar and a stain in our history, and the faith groups have to reconcile with that as well, the faith group I belong to is taking steps to come to reconciliation, so I don't think we've gone far enough. I, this is a, a very positive step, but unfortunately, we do miss opportunities, a, and I hope moving forward that we will consider what this proclamation means when we start making decisions on expanding development, on, on encroaching on very significant lands, and I do respect uh the history of where we are. I mean, we, we can say that uh we live on um lands that were stolen and built by the hands of the indentured and enslaved, and that is the truth, and that is our history. And the more we can do to reconcile with that and address that, acknowledge that, and try to move forward in harmony, the better we'll be, and I thank you. And please, support this resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on item five B? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, I'll turn the gavel back over to the chair.
I'll accept the gavel after saying that um this has been a good opportunity for me to gain more information and more learning about the relationship of the Oto-Missouri to Lincoln, Nebraska, and I really thank those who, who offered me that opportunity to learn. Thank you. Alright. And with that, I will take the gavel back. Alright, Madam Clerk.
I'll call item five C, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24016, Application of Urban Development Director to Review Us to Conformance with the 2015 Lincoln-Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, A Proposed Amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to Add the Constellation Studios' Expansion Redevelopment Project, to include the expansion on the existing Constellation Studios building and associated streetscape enhancements on property genre located at 2055 O Street.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody, Peter Heine, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. Uh, really excited to be here this afternoon, when I was 12, I won the art prize at my school, and it was at that moment I realized the importance of art, because I got this book that outlined artists that grew from nothing and became something. And I think art as an act of making, uh of community is really important, and this project does that. Constellation Studio uh is a presence on one of our busiest streets in our downtown, O Street. Uh, it has a mural that faces to the east that is incredible, and uh this project seeks to expand on that. Karen Koontz is here, uh the owner, as well as Andrew Willis, I'm gonna let them really talk about the project, uh because you'll want to hear from them, because they're better at it than I am. Um, but really, my comments are about um how this works with our comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, O Street is a busy street in our downtown, uh it's dubbed as a mixed-use redevelopment corridor, this is right there at 21st and O, it's actually the entrance, one of the pieces of the entrance into const- into the Telegraph District. Our comprehensive plan talks about preservation, renewal, adaptive reuse, filling in the missing pieces, so there's a missing tooth in O Street that this project will fill in and use as an infill project, it supports small business, and it provides a vibrant community that's supported by artists and creative activity. Um, I'm gonna show you, uh we're currently working with the applicant uh and discussing uh tax increment financing, and I want to show you a familiar plan uh here, that I'll just zoom in just a little bit. Uh, because I, we like to talk about where uh we're looking at the public right of way, and where we're um spending our effort. And you can see, I'm just gonna turn this, because sometimes you can't hear, um you can see we're capturing both sides of O Street. Um, we are capturing the, the sort of dog leg or the angled piece of 21st Street, that then on N Street, you can see the uh bike path that runs east-west, this is uh the two roofs that are shown here are the, the new buildings in Telegraph District as the sort of entrance to Telegraph. And I wanted to point it out as well, this triangular park that we've identified in the plan. Um, none of these right now, we have um significant uh funding dedicated to these, but they are included in our, in our um area plan, and we're also capturing the alley behind the project as well. The project will infill this empty uh lot that is 20, I don't know how wide it is. It's 25 feet wide and 142 feet long, approximately uh 3,550 square feet of property. Um, so just wanted to bring this to your attention, uh for your vote to amend the comprehensive plan, and also um to uh, I, I'm gonna actually read the justification from the uh staff report from the planning department, and that is the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, downtown master plan, Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan that we will be amending with this effort, the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan, and Climate Action Plan, it will strengthen downtown Lincoln, uh downtown Lincoln's position as the center for arts and cultural expression within the region, and it will support the expansion of a locally-owned small business. I can't say it better than they did. Um, I also wanted to thank uh Abby Latrell in our law department, and Jennifer Hyatt, who had been working diligently with the applicant to get to this day, so thank you very much, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Alright, uh questions, Councilman Duden.
Peter, is there anything that they're gonna be doing to kind of uh shield that LES lot? Because that's kind of an ugly looking lot there, at 21st and N.
I like those, they look good. Um, yes, not with this project, um it's a really good question, and it's a fair question, uh when we get development around uh those transfer, the, the stations that LES has around the city, we are currently and working with LES right now on that project. The developer of Telegraph uh has funds dedicated to that, the city has dedicated with their redevelopment plan, and uh that should be starting here this fall, we're working out the details of what that is. Um, and I will follow up with all of you and send you those documents and uh the drawings, so you can see what that's gonna look like, because it's part of, it's in support of this project, sort of next to it, to, to try and continue the uh entrance into Telegraph, so that's a great question, and I'll, I'll make sure that you're all briefed on that. Any other questions I can answer for anybody?
Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll find out if there's
Yes.
from others. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on this item, either in support, oh, we, I'm sorry, we have the applicant? And the applicant's attorney?
Good afternoon, Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, on behalf of Constellation Studios.
And I'm Karen Koontz, 2055 O Street, at Constellation Studios.
So I've never won a uh art prize myself, but I do second the importance of the arts in the community, and this really is an exciting project for that purpose. So this is the view from O Street, 21st and O Street, uh you can see, and essentially what we're doing here is this redevelopment project, or the, or the project that's in this plan, is essentially doubling the space of Constellation Studios, filling in that missing tooth there. Um, if you look at the site, you can, here's a better picture, because you get to see the mural, um, right there, so that's, that's the building, um as we all know, and, and again, really, what this does is expands the studios. Um, it is going to create additional gallery workspace, uh studio space for additional artists, really just double the, I, I mean, probably more than double, but just, you know, further that mission, further the arts in the community, that's, it's, it's, um, that's overall what, what's going on, the uh redevelopment project itself, not only will build out that space, um there's gonna be some site preparation costs involved, there's the energy efficiency enhancements that are in part of that new, new uh development, it'll include a little bit of parking on the side, some streetscape improvements, um. This project has been before urban design on the 9th of July, I believe, um but was a, was approved as far as design goes there. Again, overall, goal of expanding a, a local business, uh supporting the arts, and furthering just both that, you know, that's Antelope Valley, right next to Telegraph District, really important as everything's expanding, this will do um really be an, an important part of the overall development of downtown. If all goes well, hopefully we'll be back next week to talk about the redevelopment agreement, and we can talk about more, but again, it's about a 1.5 million dollar project, but is going to need a little bit of tax increment financing assistance, um Karen, I don't know if you want to talk more about the Karen, I don't know if you want to talk more about the project itself.
I'm happy to share with you that for the last year, I've been developing the plan to further my small business of Constellation Studios, which is an LLC. I wanted to build on this empty lot that I bought from the city about five years ago, because that's the only direction I can expand. My vision is to create an enhanced working art studio center that includes a retail space that features arts and crafts by studio artists, a classroom space that can be used for event rental and teaching, and art camps for kids in the summer. And it'll have four various-sized private studios for artists to rent. There will be an entranceway off of O Street to an inviting outdoor courtyard that's designed for selective access and security. This expansion project for Constellation Studios is actually a practical vision that can further develop our artist-run community, can offer additional hands-on engagement for a variety of art-making activities by our members, and to widen the circle of participants that the artists that rent from the space help double, triple, quadruple the number of people who are seeking creative activities and learning opportunities. I've been running Constellation Studios for 10 years now, and I have a stable level of activities and balance of income and expenses. My goal is not becoming a millionaire on this project. It is viewed as an incubator to benefit artists in Lincoln through educational, affordable studio space and to attract and host artists and residents who come from around the world. I've hosted 62 artists over these 10 years, including nine international artists who've come. Such development and enhanced facility at this time would continue to benefit the community, artists, and our civic social well-being. The facility will be income-generating, and that will be put towards the operating costs and the bank loan. I believe I've developed something very special here that's attracting attention, and I seek longevity, and at a pace that a small-business owner can manage. So I intend to foster the next generation through my constellation of networks and intend to make a difference for our community. So I ask for your support and belief in me and that Constellation Studios and this exciting expansion project is going to be quite something for everybody. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
I have a question. Could you tell me a little bit, will your artist studios be live-workspace or just workspace? Just workspace. I have, in the current facility, I have a guest room that artists can stay in, and then they work in the general space with all of us.
There won't be an expansion, no additional residential spaces.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on this item, either in support or in opposition? Anyone here to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, let's move into the voting session.
I'll call item 5A, Accepting and Approving the Report of New and Pending Claims Against the City for August 16 through August 31 of 2024, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Madam Chair, I'd like to propose a second.
At second, Tom Duden, all right, now.
I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw the two claims that were denied, so that a little bit more investigation can take place.
So you'd like to withdraw the claim by Justin Dubas and the claim by Ashley Beeden?
Yes, those two.
All right.
Move them to pending, or?
Yeah, move them to pending.
To pending, okay.
May I ask?
Yes, please.
Yeah, help me out.
Do you want to set a date for that to come back through council?
Yeah, like two weeks or something like that.
Or the next date of pending or claim review, so it's not perpetually sitting out there?
Right.
Look for a time period here.
We're still in the motion not seconded.
We're in the motion.
Yeah, motion not seconded. I think
We're trying to craft the motion with
I think that there is a motion to move to pending, and I hear the timeline request. I think the motion could be that it would, that those would move to pending and be on the next claims report.
Okay.
And I don't know exactly when that is, but it's approximately twice a month.
So, Councilman Duden, I hear your motion as a motion to remove these two claims to pending, with them coming back at the next claims report.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Beckus. All right, thank you very much. So let's, is there any discussion on this motion? Then let's, if there's no discussion on this motion, Madam Clerk, we'd like to vote on the motion to withdraw, move to pending, and bring back in two weeks.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right, thank you. And let's go to the main motion, already been moved and seconded.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. So your items will be on further review, and they'll come back to us in two weeks. You're welcome. All right, okay. Madam Clerk, the next item.
Item 5B is a resolution declaring September 21 as Otomazura Day, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second? Oh, I can't second. I'm sorry. I broke the rules. I can't second.
You're quick.
I know.
Are you still chair?
I am still chair, so
I will second that.
Thank you very much. I got enthusiastic.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to note that I wanted to thank Chair Washington for introducing this. I'm only introducing this in spirit. This is her resolution that she has brought forward, which I'm happy to support, and just want to make that acknowledgement.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
Item 5C is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 24016, Application of the Urban Development Director to Review Us to Conformance with the 2050 Lincoln-Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley Redevelopment Plan to add the Constellation Studios' Expansion Redevelopment Project to include the expansion of the existing Constellation Studios building and associated streetscape enhancements on property generally located at 2055 O Street, introduced by Beckus.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right. We'll move on to public hearing ordinances, second reading.
I'll call items 6A through 6G together. Item 6A through G is approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and Larry Wolf for the lease of space by Aging Partners for its personnel and family services at 137 North 8th Street, Geneva, Nebraska, and with the County of Polk, Nebraska, for its personnel and family services program at 400 Hawkeye Street, Osceola, Nebraska. Also with City of Hickman for its senior program at 115 Locust Street in Hickman. Also with Americans Legion Post #280 for its senior center program at 970 Monroe Bennett, Nebraska. The Village of Firth, Firth Community Center for its senior center program located at 311 Neha Street, Firth, Nebraska. Rex and Jane Reamer for its personnel and family services located at 370 North 5th Street, David City, Nebraska. And the Village of Malcolm for its senior center program at 137 East 2nd Street, Malcolm, Nebraska, through the time of September 1 of 2024 through August 31 of 2026.
Good afternoon, Director Jones.
Good afternoon, Councilors. Randy Jones, Aging Partners Director, Department of Aging, 600 South 70th Street. These seven lease agreements are for two-year leases, beginning in 2024 and last through 2026. They support our services in these communities where we provide Aging Partner Services. These are renewals, they're not new. And all of these are being funded through either federal, state, or county funding. No city dollars are involved. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have and ask for your consideration of the leases.
All right. Are there any questions for Director Jones?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move forward, Madam Clerk, to items on third reading.
Is there anyone else here to testify on items 6A through 6G?
Seeing no one, we can move ahead.
Item 7A is amending Lincoln-Minnesota Code Section 3.24.080 Telecommunication Occupation Tax by amending the applicable tax rate from 6% to 4% pursuant to state law, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right.
Item 7B is approving the North 26th and U Street redevelopment agreement between the City and Maureen Development LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 2517, 2521, 2525, and 2529 Vine Street, and 2540, 2546, 2552, and 2558 U Street, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion?
Yeah. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend this due to some clerical errors.
Okay, motion to amend one. Thank you.
Second?
Second, Beckus. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote first on the motion to amend one.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Okay, and now the main motion.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Item 7C is amending the fiscal year 2324 CIP to authorize an appropriate $357,706 in tax increment financing for the North 26th and U redevelopment project, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion?
Yeah, again, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend for a clerical update on the numbers here.
All right.
Second?
Second, Beckus. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion to amend one.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right, and on the main motion, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right.
Item 70 is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the North 26th and U Street redevelopment project, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Carlson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Beckus?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right. That concludes our voting session today. Madam Clerk.
Section 8 is resolutions, first readings are items 8A through 8G. Section 9 is first reading and related resolutions are items 9A through 9F. Section 10 is our pending list, items 10A through 10H.
All right. As I noted earlier, at the start of the meeting, today is a day when we have public comments, where anyone may speak on an item that is not on today's agenda nor planned for a future agenda. You have five minutes to address the council on any number of topics, and we ask that all speakers strive for civility and allow the business of the council to proceed unimpeded. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Sarah Mann, and I'd like to waive my address, please, for safety. I just wanted to talk today. There have been many people protesting the ongoing genocide in Gaza. My and my friends have often come here with our hands bloody to remind us all of the blood that we have on our hands. I wanted to speak today about Matt Nelson. He is a man who set himself on fire outside of the Israeli consulate on September 11th. On September 10th, he released a video where he stated, "My name is Matt Nelson, and I am about to engage in extreme act of protest. We are all culpable in the ongoing genocide in Gaza. We are slaves to capitalism and the military-industrial complex. Most of us are too apathetic to care. The protest I am about to engage in is a call to our government to stop supplying Israel with the money and weapons it uses to imprison and murder innocent Palestinians, to pressure, excuse me, to pressure Israel to end the genocide in Gaza, and to support the ICC indictment of Benjamin Netanyahu and the other members of the Israeli government. A democracy is supposed to serve the will of the people, not the interests of the wealthy. Take the power back. Free Palestine." As of several days after this incident, I was not able to find any more information on the state of this man. We do know that Aaron Bushnell set himself on fire outside of an Israeli consulate in April and died to his injuries. There was also an unknown woman who set herself on fire outside of the Israeli consulate in Atlanta, Georgia, in December, and there's been no more information about her. Oh, there we go. On September 11th, Matt Nelson self-immolated outside the Zionist consulate in Boston. In a video posted that day, Matt declared that he was about to engage in extreme act of protest. Matt is the third person to self-immolate in the United States in a protest of Gaza. He understands that this government is a co-conspirator in the crimes of all crimes. We demand the media to cover his action for what it is, a protest of the American Zionist genocide in Gaza. Matt Nelson is still in critical condition per initial reports. We send love and solidarity to him and his friends and family and wish him a speedy recovery. Many of us feel the moral crisis of resisting within the belly of the beast and watching the US government line the pockets of weapons manufacturers like General Dynamics at 4300 Industrial Avenue. With the blood of our people, from Palestine to Afghanistan, Iraq to Somalia, while the war mongers and genociders lock arms, we must lock arms with each other with those who have resisted this violence for decades and centuries. We must continue to resist. We underscore Matt's demands for the US to cease sending money and weapons to Israel, for an immediate end to the genocide, and for accountability for all of those complicit in colonial violence."
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Microphones are to either side. Yes.
Hey, Counsel, my name is Joe Miller, 4601 Huntington Avenue, Lincoln. I moved here to Lincoln 10 years ago, and I'm a first-time homebuyer. I love owning a home, especially living with a disability, being on fixed income. Homeownership has been a highlight of my life in Lincoln. It's made it possible. In two thousand one, Leighton, uh, Leighton lofts were built, uh, in behind my property, elevating from the flood platform quite high, probably like eight feet. So now, I was already in a flood plain. Um, this only put my house at even increased risk for flooding. Ever since the construction, there has, I've noticed that there hasn't been proper drainage. There hasn't been, there's no sewer, there's no water drain. So all that water during any rainy season tends to flood my house. Um, and I'll show you that intersection right now in question. So there's a Leighton. So that's the back alley behind my house, and that's, uh, my back fence. And that's a few days after a storm. You won't be able to see much, but you can look at that for now. But that will be my backyard. Uh, no, no, will not. That's on a rainy day. That's the side street. Even the side street becomes, I mean, about four or five inches of rain. I mean, there's nowhere for that water to go. So it goes up and then back down because they just redid the Forty-S sixth, um, because all of Leighton, Leighton Avenue, Forty-Ninth, uh, and Leighton was redone. So there's nice smooth roads, but Huntington, that road, Huntington is not finished. Uh, that road was not fixed. In the back alley, there's a, um, there needs some, there needs proper drainage. Let me see if I can, uh, show some, a few days, this is, you know, about four or five days after, you know, there's still water there. It takes about a week and a half, maybe more, for it to, to evaporate. My yard, my backyard will have about eight to nine inches of rain. I have a crawl space and water, that is the main sewage line for all that water to go to. So I'm knee-deep in water in that crawl space, and it's a simple, small home. And, uh, but I, I feel like if there was proper rerouting of that water to a proper sewage line, or maybe some money invested in those, that back alley, Huntington Avenue, could probably prevent, uh, any furthering damage to my property because right now my fence is in poor condition. I used to be able to mow behind my fence before this. Now weeds grow at such a fast rate and so deep. It's, uh, very difficult for me to get back in there and, and clean and make it look presentable and reflection to the nice-looking Leighton district. So I, I've been talking to Tim Zock. He, he's eager to help, except there needs to be some funding available for the, the repairs or for the, for the potential, uh, potential gutter system or rerouting, rerouting of that water for that back alley and Huntington Avenue, Huntington and Forty-sixth. Thank you for having me, and, um, it's my first time, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Does anyone have questions? Uh, Councilman Beckius?
Uh, Mr. Miller, you're at forty-six oh one Huntington, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I appreciate it. Could you do me a favor? Could you leave your contact information with the clerk?
Yes, sir.
Write it on a note and give it to her?
Yes, sir. Be happy to.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. That's it. All right.
Thanks, guys. Have a good day.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? Ms. Josephine.
Hello, Council, hello, Councilpeople. Uh, you're in. My name is Josephine, legal name Vincent Littwinowitz. Do I spell it here?
We've got it on record.
And, uh, I'm gonna not say my address. You know, it's, uh, difficult living in this town as I am, you know, myself. You know, I'm a, I'm a woman, you know, deal with it. And, uh, I get a lot of gestural violence. It's, uh, really amazing. Yesterday I had an incident, no, not yesterday, but anyway, uh, recently I had an incident. I was at a local, uh, bar around, um, close to where I live because it's, uh, I like draft Guinness, and that's why I go, and I like to sit outside. And so, um, I had been going to this place, you know, six or seven times recently because I tend to do that at certain ti- couple of times a year, uh, around the fall and spring. Anyway, so I had been going to this establishment, um, and, uh, you know, no problems. But I went during the week, you know, I'd play the jukebox, I'd get a, a couple beers, and sit outside and look, you know, just, you know, whatever. And, uh, so, um, you know, I, I, you know, I got along with everybody. And then, um, I, uh, went, uh, I happened to make the mistake to go to, uh, this place at about six o'clock on a Friday before game day. And I really didn't think about it because I don't care about anyone, what they do. I'm always looking for a beating. While I'm plowing, while I'm plowing through the Idar Down. Anyway, so I, I go later on, uh, you know, on that day. It's busy, Western Nebraskans, you know, I don't mean to stereotype this because it exists for a reason. And I guess that they were, uh, you know, didn't want me out there. Uh, it's my guess. And so, um, uh, I ordered the first beer, and after about forty-five minutes, I ordered, I ordered another one. And then someone came out and said, "You have to go now." Now, anybody can kick you out for any reason, but the previous problems that I've had in the legislature, um, with certain people, uh, uh, maybe you may be aware of. And so, um, it's demonstrating the need for equal protection. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna take this as far as I can. Now, I guess it's, I know how bars are, right? You have your own bar. When I renovated old houses and worked for Habitat for Humanity, you know, you'd hang out, you know, the barmaids, you'd get, become friends, you know? And then, um, you know, that, so when something happens, like one time a person, uh, was asked a black person to leave. I didn't hear it, but my buddy did, and, you know, we took care of it. Mostly him, but anyway. So I know how that is, so I don't, I don't know, uh, what's gonna come out of the bar because they defamation, um, because with, uh, they said why I had to le- I asked why I had to leave, and they said, "Because you, you made sexualizing comments to the staff." You know, and I'm like, "What are you talking about?" I, I don't get it. And while, while I was confused and possibly mumbling, um, then she said, and I quote, "We caught you jerking off here three years ago." And then I was gonna leave beforehand, but then, man, I'm staying. You know, you're, uh, you're not, uh, you know, she grabbed my glass and took the last sip. I mean, anyway, I'm just making a joke. And so it's not really funny. And so I, I, I didn't go, and they said, "They call the police, fine." They come, and, uh, the beat officers, you know, I know how that goes too. I'm not saying, you know, that, uh, they're like that, but I, I know how, I'm street smart, and so I don't know what's gonna come of it. But, um, you know, they, they actually defamation, um, you know, when they said that. And, uh, I'm not looking, uh, to pursue anything, uh, at all as far as any kind of action. But since I didn't leave, but I, you know, the officer said, you know, "It's not gonna be good." And I say, "It's gonna be worse than you know because of the pain issues I have." And then we settled on a bargain. I said, I, you know, I don't know who said what, that I would leave if I, if I got a citation. So I did. I got a citation for trespassing. And then I was fine, then I left. And so, um, the problem is, is this. I swear to you, I'm not having any consequences in, from this case. And I'm not doing anything. I'm not paying anything. I'm not doing apologizing. I'm not doing, if, well, I can't avoid doing time, I guess. But, um, you know, uh, I'm not doing it because, uh, of what's transpired beforehand too. And, uh, you know, I'm almost ready to make a point like, uh, with my life, you know? And I, I don't know if I'm, I don't, I'm not gonna blink. You know, if this happens this way, and, uh, if any penalty comes down on me, the only person that's gonna get hurt is me, and it's not gonna be by the law. And so, uh, this is bullshit, sorry, but that's what it is. And, uh, you know, I, I do, I am gonna make this an issue. You know, um, I don't even know, uh, based upon, you know, what has happened, and, you know, they interview both sides. That's cool. I mean, if, if, if I can't get some kind of satisfaction with this, uh, you know, possible outcome, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm a good talker. I could probably talk, you know, maybe I'll call the Washington Post or CNN, you know, um, we've had a, we've had a senator on there already, uh, that I'm, I'm gonna meet. And so, um, you know, I've talked to, uh, you know, I left, you know, the, the current protocol for contacting the ACLU is to leave a message at the, um, uh, Legal Aid for Nebraska. And I think that's because I made such a big deal about reasonable accommodation prior to this, and that's cool. You can do that. So you don't have to, if you're disabled, you don't have to go through the normal process. Anyway, um, so this is the problem, and, uh, you know, I-
Your time?
Okay.
Your time, you're at five minutes.
Is there, uh, any way to sum it up?
Please sum it up.
Okay. I'm tired, and, uh, I have experiences that basically no one else has. I live in a busy area, and I never see anybody, you know, hardly see anybody like me. And, um, and so I, I have a very good persp- uh, uh, assimilation of, you know, um, anyway. So it, it kinda wears you down. The amount of gestural violence is, is pretty high, and, um, that's all. And so, uh, thank you for giving me six minutes.
Thank you.
That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
So my name's Anastasia Fenner. I'm gonna wave my address for my safety. And of course, I have like a little, just a little something that I wanna show everyone. Just, uh, let's, uh, you know, turn up some brightness. The fourth. Like General Dynamics?
One of the resolution sponsors, the Maine Coalition for Palestine, calls out that the ongoing genocide happening in Gaza is only possible because of the billions of dollars of funding by the United States. They also call out Maine Senators Collins and King and Representative Golden for accepting significant campaign donations from Israeli lobbyists. These politicians who, reminder, are public servants, have refused to listen to their constituents. I think what's happening in Portland is huge. I think it's a wonderful example of what happens when communities get together and demand more from their representatives and from their country. It's a reminder that there are a ton of moving pieces that have to be working in collaboration with each other in order to achieve Palestinian liberation. Contrary to what our politicians are telling us, we do not need to accept that our tax money is going to killing Palestinians in Palestine. Divestment is hard, but it is worth it, and it is possible. Congratulations to everyone in the city of Portland, Maine who worked on this resolution. Thank you so much for making this happen, and I hope that more cities will follow your lead.
And all those in favor will signify by doing so.
That's what it sounds like when, you know, you do things that the people want and that, that people are proud of. Instead, it's been over three hundred days of Lincoln, Nebraska being completely complicit. Not even just the three hundred days of that, that we've seen of people, you know, filming their own genocides, you know, filming themselves, like trying to pick up literal pieces of their family members. Over three hundred days of the city of Lincoln being painfully aware that there is, in fact, two thousand pound bombs that are made at Industrial and Superior at General Dynamics, which is what? Bolstered by the city of Lincoln. There is no way around this. We know that it is a public-private partnership that is the Lincoln Manufacturing Council. We know that city funds are being used to funnel people to go work at General Dynamics. Why has there been no movement on this? It is clear that other city councils can understand and can see that these people are literally broadcasting their own genocide. I don't- There is enough evidence for you to move. I would love to perhaps congratulate you. That's, that's not at all true because you've been so complicit. There's so much blood on your hands that by the time you would actually do something correct, like it would be like, okay, well, you should have done this like a year ago. But there, there is precedent for you to do this. Like even cities in Iowa have passed a ceasefire resolution, which is the most bare bones that we can do. But instead, we're not gonna call out, uh, Mike Flood for being a Zionist. We're certainly not gonna call out Pete Ricketts, who like was one of the authors of a horrible letter that was sent saying that he would try to like, I don't know, sanction the very family of a prosecutor trying to, uh, get justice for, for Palestine? Like, are we going to understand that the international community is looking at us because we are the problem? South Africa is literally seeking the, to sue the United States in a similar method that they did to sue Israel because we are complicit. The bombs that are made here kill kids. There are bombs in Lincoln that kill kids thousands of miles away. There are bombs that are made in Lincoln that kill kids. And none of you can even say that they don't deserve to die, not on camera, not where it matters. You can't shame people that need to be shamed. You can't say what actually needs to be said. It's incredibly disheartening that you have seen these people die in front of you, and still we just manufacture weapons of war. We still think that it's okay. You still haven't said anything about the Lincoln Manufacturing Council.
Fine.
And yes, oh, it's time again. Time for me to shut up so you can go about your day. Free Palestine.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Good afternoon. Uh, Roy Helm, twenty, I identify with the pronouns of he and him, uh, twenty-seven fifty South Thirteenth Street, which is Oto, Missouri land. I had the opportunity to watch, um, and listen to Professor Steve Tamari give a lecture from Pendle Hill. And the, the lecture had to do with some, some of his family history and history of colonialism, a- and the history of, uh, what is transpiring in Gaza and the West Bank. And, uh, because I, I do have a personal connection with Steve. Uh, we went to high school together and have remained in contact, and he was also assaulted, uh, last May in Saint Louis dur- during a peaceful protest, um, protesting the occupation of Gaza and the incursion there. You know, I, I feel moved to, to plead with you to take some action in, uh, demanding that our country enter into a ceasefire and, uh, to cease any, um, sale of arms or military support to Israel. It, it, it really is, uh, far past time, and, uh, you know, I, I, I hope that, uh, you know, the city, which is, uh, I guess priding itself on being compassionate, can, can expand some of that compassion. And, um, you know, I, I personally don't look for any, anything more than just, uh, a demand that our, our government get out of there. And it's, it, it is an atrocity of what's happening, and we, we are all too familiar with gen- genocide in this country. We did it, uh, with, with our Native American people. So now we have to witness it a- as citizens, but we're also, uh, as a country, participating in it again. And as my shirt says, one rise, one fall. The, the idea behind that is, is when, when one person is lifted up and rises- The idea behind that is when one person is lifted up and rises up, it lifts everybody up. But when one person falls, we all fall. We are all suffering with what's happening. And I hope that at some point, very soon, that there can be some public statement, some formal statement from our city and our city leaders that condemns this action that's ongoing. It is, it is far past time. And, you know, I find myself at the river's edge, and I'm trying to get across, but I'm looking for that love to get me across. So please, if you can find it in your hearts to work towards some, some action, it would be sincerely appreciated. So thank you, and I will thank you in advance for the action that I hope you're going to take. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
I'm Tracy Axamet, 7201 Willow. I research and write about the local impact of global agendas. Today will conclude this series of comments, a part of my 70 Days project, the fifth one, the 70 days from July 4th to September 11th, dedicated to reflecting on those impacted on 9/11, the COVID era, and all wars. I extend my sincere sympathy to everyone impacted by war. As I mentioned before, I'm an architect. I took my last class, one of my favorites in structural engineering, from Dr. Jim Potter, just down the street in the summer of 1983. Nearly 20 years later, memories of that class came flooding back as I watched replays of the World Trade Center towers collapse in freefall. As days passed after September 11th, the huge disconnect grew between media stories and what I observed, because in Potter's class, I learned that structural collapse does not happen symmetrically unless it's engineered and prepared to do so. In the years after I pushed this disconnect to the background, challenging myself only once a year to consider the dizzying number of coincidences in the CBS 9/11 documentary by the Nadeh brothers. By October 2018, though, I was ready to ask my dad to help me connect the dots between the 9/11 story and his other stories, like William Jennings Bryan's work on banking and technology, G. Edward Griffin's story of Jekyll Island and the Federal Reserve, the Trilateral Commission, and others. The most jarring connection, though, was the claim that no planes actually hit the Trade Center towers, and that the third building, Building 7, also collapsed on 9/11. I spent the next year in research and discovery examining video evidence like Peter Jennings' ABC crew reporting about one of the plane's impacts, saying it disappeared like a bad special effect. And then first responders warning everyone to move away from the impact. The intact Building 7 before it collapsed, and the BBC's Jane Stanley mistakenly reported Building 7's collapse at 5:00 PM, 20 minutes before it collapsed in freefall. These are just a few of the very long list of evidence challenging the fraudulentness in 9/11 commission reports, and perhaps why Bob Carey in 2009 referred to 9/11 as a 30-year-old conspiracy. Initiatives to bring justice and government accountability continue, thanks to efforts of groups like firefighters, pilots, lawyers, architects, and engineers. I had discovered several alternative news sources by March 2020, providing context and helping to connect the dots. One journalist even warned of the censorship to come. I began the COVID era exporting and graphing CDC statistics on deaths and research funding. It wasn't long before I learned of the 150-year-old terrain versus virus challenge, and the vigorous debate was refreshed for a new generation. Then, as was predicted, the derision and outright censorship of early effective outpatient treatments began. In frustration, I struggled for direction. So on July 4th, 2020, I began the 70 Days project, leading me, after some time, to realize my responsibility to seek the change that I expected to come from government. And I began investigation into our drinking water. So here I am, to maintain a foothold in reality, and to some amount of access, some amount of access to the wisdom of our traditions, and to continue the challenge of living in peace within the shadow of global power influencers bent on control, fear, and division. To close, Nebraska can be the good life for everyone, for the dentist, reluctant to speak out on his mercury poisoning or on fluoride toxicity, for the student expelled for not accepting the experimental injection, or for those injected against their will to keep their job, and for children, the infirm, and all minorities who are injured and unaware of toxic loads and are alternatives for healing. Please join us at the September 18th hearing to support the removal of toxifluoride in our drinking water. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing no one else?
Madam Chair, I'd move adjournment.
I'll second it.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shobe?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Moshe Kary, 70.
We're adjourned.